And come back from our recess now 11:30, we're running a little behind schedule. We're really happy today to have our folks from class here and would like to invite Donna and anyone else up. We'll have a little bit of discussion on where we're at. We haven't gotten together in quite some time.
It's been awhile. I'm gonna give you these folders. Got some of our information in there.
Hey, Congressmen?
Yes.
For the labor and how they would identify with.
I'll come over here.
Yes, it's the Clamath and Lake County Community Action Services.
Correct.
And we have Donna Bowman and some other folks, so.
So let me make introductions. This is Joelle Clayton, she runs our energy program and.
James.
James Lindsay. James Lindsay. And he runs our veterans program. So we'll be talking about that today as well.
That's great. And in the audience, we have some representatives from the community that you work with, with Charlie Pike and Veterans Services. Andrew Wishard, our director of our senior center. And we invited a few other folks, but anyway, this is.
Good.
This is the ones that are here, so.
So I'm guessing what we want to do is just a little overview of what we kind of are doing.
Yes.
For your information, so in your folder, you can go through that later, we've got really a little bit about all of our programs, but what I want to talk about is in the very back, it's called Making a Difference. This is kind of like our annual statement that's in there. And I'll just talk a little bit about what some of our programs are doing and what those programs are. The program that you probably are familiar with is the Energy Assistance Program. And we operate that in both counties. Last year, between both programs, over 8,000 people received services between Clamath and Lake County. We do, this, the energy program is sometimes confusing to folks, but what this program is designed to do is to help people that are disabled or are seniors that are on fixed incomes. And in the wintertime, when the electric bills go way out and their income doesn't, we try to help out and make sure that they have, that we can make payments for them so they can keep their heat on all winter long. And we also do some crisis payments. And on this little form, you'll see all the statistics if you're a stats person, we've got everything on there, hopefully that'll answer any questions you might have. Another one of our deep programs is the Homeless Prevention Program. We run, we have contracts with VHS on self-sufficiency side and also the child welfare side. And we do a lot of trying to find homes for people, rentals, making sure people are not homeless, a lot of families. We can do that with a variety of programs. Probably, I would say, the basis for class is we really just want people to be housed. Because if people need services, and most people do need additional services, they really can't access those services unless they have a stable house. So that if they need other services, they get access to. But it's housing first for us, so we do a lot of trying to find rentals. And we do that in Lake County and Clamath County in making sure that our families. We run two different programs, one's called Rapid Rehousing, so it's when families are homeless. And then the other one is homeless intervention.
So Donna, before you go on, because you know, we have been connected with this connected from some of our co-county programs. And the Clamath Lake Housing Association that we're part of, how does, how do you folks interact, how does that work? Is there any crossover connection?
Well, we're really connected with Clamath Housing Authority, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, we work really, really closely with Diana Otero and the Housing Authority.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, we do their home inspections for them. And we have two certified folks that do home inspections for them. And then we also partner with them on all their housing projects. We have two housing projects that we're actually partners on, and the other ones, we just meet regularly and talk about the housing issue. Housing is a huge issue statewide.
Nationwide.
Nationwide. And so we talk a lot about housing because we have families that we could house right now if we could find a housing for them. I have to say, it's been awhile since I've been in Lake County, but it was nice to come over today. But I understand you have the same issues we have in trying to find good housing for people that's reasonable and get a little different. I think you have more longer established families in Lake County than we do in Clamath. We have more people that are more traveling through, but I think we all share the same issues as far as housing goes.
Well, I go back to the homeless, there's two definitions of homeless. Originally, it was a person without place.
Right.
But it's also people who have to couch live. So when you say homeless, you're talking about both categories.
For us, our different funding streams are really different.
I do have to say that according to HUD, that definition's changed a little bit because, and it kind of tightens the ropes on us. The couch surfing is no longer considered to be homeless, according to HUD. And that's some of the definitions that we have to kind of go off of, so we gotta, we have to be careful on what, how we're able to help somebody based off of those different definitions.
But I do have some funding streams that allow for couch surfing. I consider somebody without stable housing homeless, so we are always trying to find funding that will accommodate that for us. So our HUD funding or some of our other funding, and James is gonna talk about the veterans funding in a minute, we have to be very careful about which funding streams we use to house people because, you know, come on, if you're not in permanent stable housing, you're still homeless. Although, we ran into a gentleman the other day that, we were asking about, you know, him being homeless, and he said, "I'm not homeless, I have a tent." So it's really people's definition too of what's happening.
Well, as you present this, and I don't want to keep interrupting you because this is a wonderful day to have you here today, and I just want to have a little more clarity, both for those present and for the board, and when we get requests, that's the reason I brought up the Housing Authority and the work that they have done here in Lake County as well. But to have some more clarity as to who we should really be talking to when we get questions about available housing or housing lists and the prioritization, those types of things, things that wouldn't necessarily think commissioners would be asked, but we need to know, so.
So, you know, I would say, it's, we have, we work really closely together, but we have separate roles.
Right.
So what class tries to do when people come to us is we try to accommodate whatever their services are. And we may, we have a variety of services in-house, but if we can't find what we need, we will go elsewhere. So if we can't find, you know, an answer, we may contact the Housing Authority, or we may look at their rentals, we may look at mental health, other things. So we do more of a wraparound service piece for folks. And it's a good place to start because my folks are very well trained on what the resources are available in Lake County and Clamath County. The Housing Authority itself, and I'm, with Diana Otero, they really are focused on filling their slots with their vouchers. And they have X amount of vouchers they can get out right now, they have wait lists. But they have a lot of housing that's available too. So I think it would depend on what you're looking for, as to whom you would go to. General questions, we'd be happy to answer that, and try to get the services out there. But as far as what we do, we do actually do separate things, so.
Okay. No, that helps.
And it never hurts to call and ask, you know, if you have a chance to call the office because we, we do a variety of different things, but we do try to make sure, what we, what we don't do is we don't tell somebody, "I'm sorry, we can't help you." What we try to do is make sure we can connect them with the right resources to do what we need to do, so. One of the programs you may not know about that we do have is the Representative Pay E program. So a couple of years ago, we developed this program. We have clients that, they're on disability and they really can't manage their own money. And so we contract with Social Security and we handle these folks' money, so we get their disability checks. Again, it's really important for us because we pay their bills, so we make sure they're housed, we can pay their rent. And it helps these folks stay more independent because their rent's paid, their bills are paid, they have some spending money. And they're the folks that really just can't do it themselves. And a lot of times, these are homeless folks, so what happens is we help them manage their funding. We have about 280 clients right now. Some of those clients are over here, but not very many are in Lakeview because I think probably people don't know as much about the program as they do elsewhere. We work really closely with mental health, with D V services and different agencies that house these folks so that they can remain housed and live independently.
How much outreach do you give for northern Lake County or other parts of the country?
You know, we do probably more outreach than, these guys are on their bikes and up in northern county, Lake County. We do energy education up there, we do classes up there, probably, probably four or five times a year we're up there, we do homeownership stuff up there. We do a lot of outreach, partly because part of our funding says we need to do outreach, but it's the only way we can reach a lot of folks that are out in the outline area. So it's not just Lake County, we do Christmas Valley up in the northern part, but also the northern parts of Clamath County, Ruffin, Schmaltz, and Gilcrest and different areas all the time.
Do you get good turnout?
Yes. For Christmas Valley, yes. When we do classes up there, it's not unusual to have 30, 40 people come to class. And homeownership classes, you know, there's food, there's stuff there. Actually, my folks really like Christmas Valley and that area because we do get really good turnout for people.
So before you leave today, I'm sure all of us would love to review the programs. I'd like to be notified the next time there's going to be an outreach like that. If it works, I'd like to attend.
Oh, that would be great. I'd love it. We meet a lot of times at little, I think in Gilcrest, there's like a little church we meet out there, there's all different little community centers, so wherever we can meet at and bring people together. I'm gonna kind of skip over some of my family development team programs because we kind of talked about that. We do a lot of work with VHS on a different level. You've probably heard about the Homeownership Center, and we are over here quite a bit. Michelle Scott runs that. We do a lot of counseling for folks, one-on-one credit type counseling, budget type stuff. All of our, all of our programs have an educational component to it because we just really feel like that's important for people.
Mayor, ask me to back up a little bit. You said you do a lot of work with VHS Department of Human Services. Don't be to blame all of it, can you give a few examples?
Oh, so I have, well, I have three different programs there, but I'll talk about the Navigator Program. On the Navigator Program, we work with VHS, it's referrals directly from VHS, both in Clamath and Lake Counties. What we try to do is navigate those families through that are, these aren't the hard, hardest cases, these are cases where with a little assistance, folks can usually access the services and either get their kids back or not lose their children. So we do a lot of classes with people, parenting classes. But what the navigators do is they actually help these folks find housing, which is always the number one issue. A lot of times, people don't have their kids because they don't have the housing, adequate housing. But they also help them through that process, they're called navigators, and navigate them through the system. So they help them figure out what they should be doing, why they should be doing it, and what they need to do to get their kids back. Sometimes it's helping them maybe with food or they need something, rent is usually the biggest one. But it's, it's one-on-one working with families. We really, with these programs, it's really important for us, it's not about quantity, it's quality. I would rather have 10 really successful families than try to do something for 100 that doesn't go anywhere. So we really work a lot, one-on-one, this is what you need to be doing, this is why you need to be doing it, this is, you know, can we help with the kids, where do we need to, what do we need to do? So that's the Navigator Program, and that's the child welfare side. The Family Supporting Connections Program, they do one-on-one with the self-sufficiency side, and we do a lot of counseling, helping people. It's called the Emotional Roller Coaster, it's a class that teaches people to make good choices, to understand that their choices they make affect their lives or their kids' lives. It gets a little more deep into family structure, a lot of parenting classes, that kind of thing. And we're over here, well, we were over here about twice a month, and now we're down to once a month because you don't have a whole lot of kids in care right now with the foster care system. So your numbers have gone down, so that's a good thing.
And you also coordinate with the mental health program?
We do, but we don't have as good a handle here as we do in Clamath because they're right down the street from us, so if we need them, we just walk the client down there. Here, we do have phone calls and we do have some, your VHS caseworkers here have a really good relationship. So you have some really good relationships going on, and so we kind of try to get in that, you know, if we have a client, we can make a referral and that kind of thing, so.
So Donna, this, I'll be straightforward, part of the reason that, and I'm glad that we were able to connect again, and I think that it's incumbent upon us to even strengthen our relationships since we, you know, years gone by, et cetera. But when you talk about VHS and the folks who work here, one of the VHS folks had visited with me, which led to our, my outreach to you and our meeting together today. So I guess I'm curious as to some of the struggles you would have observed related to in your work with them, being able to come up with housing. I heard this term called a priority list as well, the items for housing, is that part of the Navigator Program?
No, the navigators take, all of our cases on the navigators is referred by VHS. So all of the cases from that program comes directly from VHS. So there's really no priority, they all, all the ones we get are all prioritized. I mean, they're not prioritized, they're just cases that we take, case managed is the word I was looking for. We do have, in some of our housing, we do have some priorities, we try to place homeless people first, homeless people with children. So there is some prioritizing there, but some of that depends on housing and what's available. Because not all housing, you know, if the house is available that's like a studio, you know, then we would look for the right person to fit that. So there is some prioritizing because we have to fit. What we have found is that we need, when we house people, we need to make sure it's a good fit, we need to make sure they have a good relationship and they can work with the landlord, because most of the time, we're out of there. And the most expensive thing that we can do, and probably the least beneficial thing we can do, is house somebody and have it not work out. Because if someone leaves the housing, then we have to start over. And a lot of these folks don't get their deposits back, so we're out deposits, and then they're homeless again. And the whole priority for all of this is making sure that kids stay in school, and we need kids to be housed to do that. So the least interruption, the better for us. And James, can I talk about your veterans program?
Sure. So we started the program in Clamath and Lake County, July of 2015 is when the grant started. And you currently have that in your folder, but I wanted to give you an addition.
You see more than through.
Right. So we started the program in July of 2015. To date, we've helped about 180 veterans in Clamath and Lake County. I will tell you that probably 15 of them are from Lake County. The reason being that there's not as many here in Lake County is housing is so hard to find. I've moved six of them to Clamath Falls, just because there's just nothing here. And I try not to keep them on the program without housing for too long because then I'd lose them. They'll move out of the area, they'll go into the woods. Charlie Pike has been an immense help in locating, you know, he'll come across the veteran, he'll call me and say, "Hey, this, I think this guy's a good fit for the program." I'll come over and do an interview on him, we'll do an intake, and then we'll start the housing hunt. And then I'm over at Arrow Realty or the different realties in town saying, "Hey, what do you have available?" They'll let me know. And then what I try to do is what she alluded to a few minutes ago, is I'll prioritize is the place that we're gonna put them into a good fit, based on a couple of different things. Family size, whether they have children, what their level of income is. Because if I put them into a place, say they're getting some SSI and a little bit of VA disability, but they're only getting maybe $1,200 a month total between the two of them. Well, if I put them into a place that's $650 a month, that's half their rent. And maybe they're not qualified for HUD-BASH, so now half of their income goes to the housing. And they still have to cover utilities. So now I try to find a place where the utilities might be included with the rent. So you can kind of see how that prioritize, prioritization goes of trying to make the right fit with the, with the family. And have they dealt with this landlord before? Has the, is there already a history there? So we'll try to work with the community because we want to build a relationship with the landlord as well as with the client. Because if I build a good relationship there with the landlord and the client together, the next time I have a veteran that comes into town, I can go back to that landlord and say, "Okay, I have a lot of veterans, will you work with me again?" So that's what we try to do. We've been successful, we've got about a 94% success rate of veterans coming back to the program for a little bit further assistance or into another area. So we've never told a veteran no, and there's no waiting list. We do not have a waiting list for any veteran that comes into the program. We immediately put them on the program, we immediately start finding housing for them. If we can't find them here in Lakeview, we move them over to Clamath Falls to either the Veterans and Veterans Center. We moved two of them into Victory Commons, which is run by Clamath Housing Authority, but we partner with them on that. So we moved them into there, that, and then another one's in Chillicothe, they found housing there. So we've moved them around different places to where we could best fit them with their There's two caseworkers, we were up in Christmas Valley quite a bit, we went, you know, we go through there in the wintertime, we go through there in the summertime. We're there quite often to try to make that connection and find that veteran when they're most vulnerable. Right now, we're building up some kits, we're gonna have some food, hygiene items, and some personal kits, so that when we go out and do these outreaches, we have something to present them with so that we're meeting in an immediate need, and then we can get them interested in what the long-term stabilization is. And that's what our goal is. In our program, with the veteran program, we can help them work for six to nine months based on their income and their situation. So we'll bring them onto the program, we'll pay the deposit, pay the rent for several months, we'll, we have an employment developer who will work with them. We've got three here now that are employed locally here in Clamath and Lake County, and we're working with them on the program. Eventually, they'll get to a point where their income can stabilize their rent. So we'll work with them that way. Then I'll screen them, I'll either send them to the VSO for screening for disability, we'll work on getting them Social Security. Our employment developer is gonna be being trained to do the Social Security Disability intake so they can apply for Social Security. Also, we send them to the VA, to Daryl Cooper, he'll either come over here, or we'll send them, we'll get them a ride and get them over to the VA and get them screened for HUD-BASH, which is very similar to HUD Section 8, only there's no waiting list. They immediately get a voucher and get onto the program, and then the VA funds that, it's not funded through HUD. So it goes a lot quicker. So they're shot right to the top of the list, we give them into housing, and then we get them stabilized onto a long-term program to keep them. Yes?
So James, can I, can we go back to the employment advisor? Can you share with me who that, who that entity is in both Lake and Clamath County?
That is Raymond Ramirez, and he works for me at class. And what he does is he helps them build a resume, he takes the information from their history and their military history, and he helps them build a resume. He gets that resume put together, he contacts the employer, finds out exactly what the employer is looking for, then he talks to the veterans, and he matches the personalities together of what exactly they're looking for. We get a long-term relationship that way. He also sits down with them and does interview practice so that when that veteran gets ready to roll into that interview, he knows what he's looking for. He knows exactly how to kind of answer those questions and isn't so nervous. Because a lot of times, getting into that interview, you get nervous, you don't know exactly what they're gonna ask. So we have a list of questions that we sit down and we start going through with that veteran, so that they're well aware of what can be asked from them in that interview. And we've got, we've got a great success rate. Between November and this month, we've got 26 between Clamath and Lake hired. And we're actually doing better with veterans than work sources.
Yeah. Well, and that, that's the interesting part, not to spend a lot of time on this, but we just had Chip Massey from KCC here, as well as Jim Belay on a related note, but with our new workforce provider in, in Lake and Clamath County, it's going to be KCC. Previous to this, it was COIC. And we, we have a lot of similar programs.
Right, right.
So I was just kind of curious.
Ray works with them.
Good.
He gets in contact with them, and if we can, if we can find a way to, to make the whole system work together, Ray does that. He works with WorkSource, he works with KCC. In fact, we're gonna try to partner with KCC to where a few of our veterans, we can send through their CDL course, and our SSBF program can actually pay for the veterans' course. So we're working a couple of different issues. Sometimes we get a veteran in who doesn't qualify for some of the veteran services, we'll work with KCC and do a vocational rehab with them and get them.
Well, and there's going forward, even though there's limited funds with, we owe dollars, and we just had a great presentation on where we're at with this transition. KCC's going to take on an expanded role that they haven't to date. The COIC will be leading the communities of Lake and Clamath County.
Right.
In the near future.
Right. And KCC's taking that on, so we're gonna partner with them and work some of our veterans through that program as well. So the hardest piece right now in Lake County is housing. If we could find a way, and, and I have been up to a couple of meetings in Salem and Porton and talking to some different entities, we're trying to find the funding so that we can replicate what Clamath Falls did on Michigan Street with Victory Commons, we would like to try to replicate that in Lake County as well, to have a little veteran community within Lake County.
Yeah. So for people on in the audience, expand on the Victory Commons.
Victory Commons is a, an 11 unit with a community room, it's six duplexes, single room, one is a two-bedroom, and that's where the manager stays. Everybody in there is a veteran. Every, every head of household is a veteran. And so there's 11 veterans in that community right now. Two of them came from Lake County the day that they opened there in, in November. And one recently had passed away and another veteran had moved in, that veteran was from Lake County. So, but that was done by Bogotay Construction and is controlled or managed through Clamath Housing Authority. So.
Yep.
Good partnerships.
Yeah.
All the way around. And so we'd like to try to, I would like to see something duplicated like that here in, in Lakeview as well. And we're gonna try to look at expanding some more units like that in Clamath Falls as well.
Right.
But we just have, we're, we're working on different communications to find the funding to do so.
You mentioned duplicate that in Lakeview. It's, how is the veterans dispersed across Lake County as far as identifying investigation?
That's, that's difficult. I think Charlie would probably have a better idea of how they're dispersed. There's a lot of veterans in Christmas Valley that we can't get to, or they don't want us to get to. It would be nice to be able to have a housing unit like that in northern county, in, both in Clamath and Lake County, because we know we have the veterans up there to serve. But population-wise or per capita, we'll probably have more veterans here in, in Lakeview than we do up there.
More veterans in need.
Right.
Records in need.
Veterans in need.
Great. Thanks, James.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Great information. And can you, for the audience, explain to Patch?
Oh, yes. Patch is Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association. We also are Veterans Helping Veterans. If you'll notice, my flyer also says Veterans Helping Veterans. I'm a retired Navy Chief, 22 years. My partners are Noco Walker Herrera. He is a 32-year Army Lieutenant, retired Lieutenant Colonel. And our veteran, employment developer, Ray Rheras, is two-years Army. He's an Army veteran. So it is Veterans Helping Veterans. Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association does the same thing. There's a lady here in town who is a widow of a retired veteran, and we're looking at, through Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association, helping her with a door, replacing a sliding door. So what we do is we raise funds in the community to help our local veterans where a program doesn't exist or can't help. So it may not be much, but it might be moving a ramp or maybe building a ramp so they can get into their house, replacing the door, maybe helping with some windows, moving them, maybe helping with a car repair, things like that. So something simple that some other entity just can't take because they have different rules and regulations on them. So that's where we try to step in.
So James, thanks for your service.
Absolutely.
Thanks for your continued service.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I don't know if I have a question. Do you have any questions?
I think this was a great overview. We do have some, some folks in the audiences who described earlier. I don't know if they've got any questions. I know you're going to be having a meeting earlier today over at Senior Center, so I don't know if Andrew has anything right now. Should probably wait till then. We have the mayor of Lakeview, a veteran here. I don't know if Ray has any.
Mine, thank you.
If not, we sure do appreciate it. And I'll try and not be as tardy with visiting with you and stop in over at the office on there when I'm in town because I'm over there quite a bit, so.
We would love it. And if you ever have questions about something, or you have a particular need, because we're going to be doing a community needs assessment this summer. So you're going to be getting surveys, because that's kind of how we go after funding is we figure out what's missing, you know, some of the areas that's really missing. Of course, housing is like big flashing lights. But we'll be doing a community needs assessment this summer, and I really need Lakeview to participate in that to help us out. And then from there, we'll decide where the gaps are so that we can target those areas for funding. And, you know, we're also waiting to see what our funding's going to look like, like everybody else. But it's really helpful for us because the more information we have, the better job we can do. So anytime we have questions, if we can call you, or you can put us in touch with the right people to find out information, it will be helpful for us.
Well, when you do the outreach, as I said earlier, I'm not interested just in North Lake, but I really would like to come up to one of the outreaches up there. That's a little gap, please.
Great.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, oh, we got your business cards from them.
What's it?
Do you need to make sure it's a business card?
Yeah.
Contact them. Absolutely. Did I say that?
Yeah.
I was trying to say that.
Reconvene.
Well, we're going to have some stuff after this meeting. It's going to take a couple hours. I'd say one o'clock.
One o'clock.
Does that work?
Okay.
So we will recess our, our board meeting at 12:05, and we'll come back for recess lunch.